Ms. Lewis, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For those who are streaming in at home, we have a boardroom full of folks who are here. It's an exciting morning, and I want to call our meeting to order for Friday, July 8, 2020. We're going to start our meeting with a moment of silence, and then we'll get ready with our agenda. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the presentation of certificates of election to our newly elected school board members. We have a representative from the Board of Elections who will join us. Good morning. It's all right, if you can turn your mic on right there. Perfect.
All right, is that better? Good morning, board members. Board Chair Baxton could not make it this morning, so I'm going to step in at her place. And I might go state a few words and then hand out the certificates. Good morning, school board members. As Director of the Board of Elections, I'm delighted to be with you this morning to present the certificates of election to newly elected members of the school board. Here to assist me with this, with the presentation this morning is Nicole Smith. On May 27, the Durham County Board of Elections certified the results of the 2022 School Board Elections. All prevailing candidates were mailed certificates of elections as required by law. For the May School Board Election, 232,510 residents were eligible to participate. Of those eligible, 56,696 residents voted, yielding a 24.38% voter participation rate. While turnout was not as high as we hoped for, we appreciate the resilience of Durham voters during the election cycle. The Canvas results confirmed the election of Emily Susana Chavez as District 1 School Board Member. Actually, this is just a summary. I'll get to the certificate. Thank you, and I appreciate the zeal. Bettina Umstead is District 2 School Board Member. Matt Sears is District 3 School Board Member. Natalie Byer is District 4 School Board Member. And Millicent Rogers is Consolidated District B School Board Member. All elected officials will serve a four-year term, except for Ms. Rogers, who was elected to fill the remainder of a four-year term set to expire in 2024. We are always appreciative of the diverse field of candidates that participate, which speaks to the vibrancy and inclusivity of our wonderful community. So thanks to all those who participated. Pursuant to the order of the agenda, we will now present the ceremonial certificates of election for the 2022 School Board Election. So first up, District 1 School Board Member Emily Susana Chavez with 4,796 votes. For District 2 School Board Member Bettina Umstead with 9,199 votes. For District 3 School Board Member Matt Sears with 13,512 votes. For District 4 School Board Member Natalie Byer with 7,488 votes. And for Consolidated District B School Board Member Millicent Rogers with 17,572 votes. Thank you for your time this morning. Congratulations to all board members.
Thank you, Mr. Bowens and the Board of Elections. It's exciting. The next item on our agenda is going to be our oath of office. We have one of our newly re-elected school board members, Matt Sears, who's joining us virtually, as well as Javonya Lewis. We'll get started with Mr. Sears virtually, and then we'll move on to the next.
Good morning, all.
Good morning. Can we bring up Mr. Sears' video? You can tap that microphone, right?
Can everyone hear me now? All right, so good morning. It's such an honor to administer the oaths today, and so words have importance. And so, congratulations, Mr. Sears. You can repeat every word after me, and I will slow down. I.
Aye.
State your full name.
Matthew Mitchell Sears.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
For the Durham Public Schools.
For the Durham Public Schools.
That in the discharge.
And in the discharge.
That in the discharge.
That in the discharge.
Of said duties.
Of said duties.
I will fairly and diligently.
I will fairly and diligently.
Consider all issues coming.
Consider all issues coming.
Before the Board of Education.
Before the Board of Education.
So that every student.
So that every student.
Is provided with.
Is provided with.
An equal opportunity to learn.
An equal opportunity to learn.
And so that each school.
And so that each school.
Provides an environment.
Provides an environment.
In which every student.
In which every student.
Is encouraged and can.
Is encouraged and can.
Reasonably be expected.
Reasonably be expected.
To realize.
To realize.
His or her maximum.
His or her maximum.
Educational potential.
Educational potential.
Without regard to.
Without regard to.
Their or my.
Their or my.
Place of residence.
Place of residence.
Within Durham County.
Within Durham County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Sears.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, so if you'll put your left hand above, raise your right. I state your full names. Do solemnly affirm. That I will support and maintain. The Constitution. And laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws. Of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith. And that I will faithfully. Discharge the duties. Of my office. As a member. Of the Board of Education. For the Durham Public Schools. That in the. Discharge of said duties. I will fairly and diligently. Consider all issues. Coming before. The Board of Education. So that every student. Is provided with. An equal opportunity to learn. So that each. School provides. An environment in. Which every student. Is encouraged. And can be reasonably. Be expected. To realize his or her. Maximum educational potential. Without regard. To their. Or my. Place of residence. Within Durham County. So help me God. Congratulations. All right, so at this time, can. I'll just come on up. And whoever wishes to. Are you ready? Go raise your right hand. I state your full name. Do solemnly affirm. That I will support. And maintain. The Constitution. And laws. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And laws. Of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith. And that I will. Faithfully. Discharge the duties. Of my office. As a member. Of the Board of Education. For the Durham Public Schools. That in. The discharge of said duties. I will fairly. And diligently. Consider all issues. Coming before. The Board of Education. So that every student. Is provided with. An equal opportunity to learn. And so that each school. Provides an environment. In which every student. Is encouraged. And can reasonably. Expected. To realize. His or her. Maximum. Educational potential. Without regard to. Their. Or my. Place of residence. Within Durham County. So help me God. Congratulations. And Ms. Chavez? Raise your right. All right. I. State your full name. Solemnly affirm. That I will support. And maintain. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And laws. Of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith. And that I will faithfully. Discharge the duties. Of my office. As a member. Of the Board of Education. For the public. Durham Public Schools. That in the discharge of said duties. I will fairly. And diligently. Consider all issues. Coming before the Board of Education. So that every student. Is provided. An opportunity to learn. And so that each school. Provides an environment. In which every student. Is encouraged. And can. Reasonably be expected. To realize his or her. Maximum. Educational potential. Without regard to their. Or my. Place of residence. Within Durham County. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our newest board members who are re-elected and newly elected. Ms. Rogers has joined us up at the dais. Ms. Chavez, I invite you to do the same. We are excited to have you all join us. At this time, I'm going to pass the gavel over to Dr. Mavenga for the election of officers.
Thank you, Ms. Umstead. In a moment, I will call for nominations for the Office of Chair of the Durham Public School Board of Education. The Board will follow the procedure contained in new policy 2200. Nominations do not require a second. If more than one person is nominated, the Board will vote on the nominees in order of nomination. The first person to receive a majority of Board members' presence is elected chair. Nominations are in order for the Office of Board Chair. Are there any nominations?
Yes. Dr. Mavenga, board and everyone present, at this moment, I would love to nominate Ms. Bettina Umstead for the chair position. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Valladolid. Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations for the Office of Board Chair are closed. I know we have a couple Board members that are joining us virtually. Ms. Jovania Lewis, as well as Matt Sears. So, we are going to take a roll call, since we have two Board members are joining us virtually. Those in favor of nominees, which are Ms. Umstead, Bettina Umstead as chair, I'm going to call for you to vote. I'm going to start with those who are joining us virtually. Matt Sears.
I vote aye.
Jovania Lewis.
Aye.
Alexandra Valladolid.
Aye.
Emily Chavez. Millicent Rogers.
Aye.
Natalie Byer.
Aye.
Bettina Umstead.
I vote aye.
Ms. Bettina Umstead is voted seven votes as the Chair of the Board of Education. Congratulations, Madam Chair. I'm passing back the gavel. I did not keep it for long.
Thank you, Dr. Mavenga, and thank you to the board members. I am humbled to be nominated and serve as your chair again this year. I think we have, I'm excited about this board that's coming in. We have so many strengths on our board. I see educators, I see Durham natives, I see policy advocates, I see racial justice advocates. I see so much potential in the different ideas and strengths and challenges. We're going to challenge each other to grow and be better as we serve as a board together. We know that some of the challenges that we face for public school education are great. We know that we have a state that doesn't support our schools as much as they should. We know that we have folks who are out wanting to not have truth-telling in our schools. But I see a school board who's committed, who's committed to continue to telling the truth, who's committed to keep advocating for our students and our families, who's committed to working together with our community to get what we need for our students and our educators. In a few short weeks, some of our students will start school again. We know that principals are now working on class schedules, thinking about how to re-engage those students who may have been disengaged during the summer. We know our year-round folks are writing lesson plans and organizing classrooms. And we know that we have great strengths in our team here in Durham Public Schools. I look forward to us working together, working with our educators, and making sure that our school system continues to fulfill our mission to ignite the limitless potential of our students. And our educators, I also add. Thank you all again for this nomination. Next, I will accept nominations for the Vice Chair. Are there any nominations? Ms. Rogers.
Madam Chair, everybody this morning, I'd like to nominate Matt Sears.
Are there any other nominations? We will do, if not, nominations for the Office of the Vice Chair are closed. We are going to do another voice vote. We'll start with our virtual attendees, Mr. Sears.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Valladolid.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It passes unanimously. Mr. Sears, do you have any words that you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you so much, colleagues, for your consideration and support. I look forward to focusing on board operations and communication. This board has, not only am I excited, just as our chair mentioned a moment ago about the strengths of this board, but our strength is also in our ability to operate efficiently for this administration and for this community. Small projects that are not small are critical coming up, including growing together, including continuing our capital improvement projects. And as we all know, challenges like a pandemic can spring upon us at any moment. So I look forward to being a communicator among this board and really appreciate the support and the chance to take on this role. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda is approval of the Board of Education meeting schedule for 2022-2023.
I move approval of the 2022-2023 Board of Education meeting schedule.
It's been moved by Ms. Valladolid, seconded by Ms. Byer. Any other discussion? Ms. Byer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I tried to catch, I was wondering about the time for our work sessions and had had previous conversation with Ms. Valladolid, but I forgot to catch up. Would a 5:30 start be better for your commute and would that be something that the board could consider before we set these times going forward?
Is there any discussion? My only concern would just want to make sure that we are efficient in our time. Our staff will make sure they need to report to work on Friday. So I want to make sure that we're able to extend, we are able to end our meetings in a way that doesn't lead into Friday on a regular basis.
And for clarification, so 5:30 and 6:30, right, because we have, we have 6:30 meetings as well, so.
So 5:30 would be the work session and 6:30 would be the general meeting.
I support that. Thank you.
Mr. Sears or Ms. Lewis, any discussion?
No, I'm glad to support this, just noting that we've had start times ranging from 4 to 6 and have generally moved things back to accommodate the community and our colleagues. So thank you for bringing that up.
I'm also in support.
So we will do a voice vote. We'll start with Mr. Sears. And if you virtually can state your name as well before you vote.
Yes, this is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
This is Javonya Lewis. I vote aye.
All right, Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Valladolid.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is consent items. These items have been sent to board members prior to the meeting to be read through and communicated, and any questions have been communicated with staff. The one item on our agenda is campus maintenance contracts. Some of these making sure that our schools are going to be ready for students to return very soon. I'll accept the motion.
I move approval of the consent item.
The move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Valladolid. Any other discussion? We'll do another roll call vote. We'll do another roll call vote. Mr. Sears.
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
Ms. Lewis.
This is Giovanna Lewis. I vote aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Valladolid.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That passes unanimously. I'll accept the motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Are you going to amend the agenda to add a personnel item after the closed session?
Yes, we will, Mr. Malone. If we can have a motion to amend the agenda to add. A personnel, an open session will return from closed session.
I move that we amend the agenda to include an open session personnel item after closed session.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Chavez. Any other discussion? All in favor, oh, excuse me, I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Sears.
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
Ms. Lewis.
This is Giovanna Lewis. I vote aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
And Ms. Valladolid.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It passes unanimously. So now we can, I'll accept the motion to go into closed session.
Move that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Chavez. We'll do another roll call. Mr. Sears.
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
Ms. Lewis.
This is Giovanna Lewis. I vote aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Valladolid.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. It passes unanimously. We are now moved into closed session. Thank you all for joining us today, those who are here in person as well as virtually.
We are now back in open session. Dr. Mabinga.
Madam Chair, I'm here to seek for your approval for the personnel report as discussed at the close session.
Move approval of the personnel report dated July 8, 2022. Second?
The move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Chavez. Any other discussion? Do we have Mr. Sears and Ms. Lewis? Are you all back on?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll do our voice vote. Mr. Sears?
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
Ms. Lewis?
This is Jovania Lewis. I vote aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Valyadarez?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, passes unanimously. And with that, we are adjourned.